We call this meeting to order. Please stand for the flag. This way.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business, I would be standing here, Mr. Silver. Mr. Silver, please stand and raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of board member.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of board member.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. Next order of business, do I have any nominations for president?
I nominate Jen Horshol.
Okay.
I second.
Okay. Any other nominations?
Are you going to nominate him?
All right. Take a vote with a show of hands, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Are you abstaining?
No.
Michael, should she abstain or can she?
I don't know.
I didn't vote.
You can vote?
I voted.
I didn't see a hand go up.
Michael's here if you have questions, by the way.
All right. And then Jen, if you would please give a hand and repeat after me.
There it goes.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of board president.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of board president.
Thank you.
Yay.
And last thing before Ms. Silver, what was it, Jen, do I have any nominations for vice president?
I nominate Ellen Kindley.
No, I nominate, oh, wait.
Too late.
What do you mean? I was going to nominate Don Sutcliffe.
That's what.
So I hear two nominations on the board.
Okay, so I need a second for, all right, for, you're nominating Ellen. Yes?
He nominated me, but nobody seconded me.
Yeah, no, there's no second. No second, that's fine.
So I need a second for, does that motion stay?
I second that. For Don.
For Don.
Yeah.
Okay. So Ellen, let the record show, Ellen made a motion to nominate Don and Jen seconded. Any other nominations? Okay. Okay.
Yay.
No, you need to vote first.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'm voting for him.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll raise your hand, I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of vice president.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of vice president.
Okay, thank you. Now we turn the meeting over to Jen Horshol.
Is this where I just start reading? Do I always do?
No.
Because we're in New York.
Oh, sure.
So where am I going to? It just says the newly elected president of the Eden Board of Education will not preside. Excuse me, Barb. Where's your oath?
The card?
Yeah, when? When is your oath?
Oh, because mine, now if you want. It's next, I believe, on the.
Really? So you're going to go for.
Yeah, it's coming.
Do this one. To number four A. The request to withdraw? Okay. So we are on item four A of the agenda, which is the routine actions and consent at this, does anybody have any requests to have any items removed from the consent agenda and considered separately? No. Moving on. Lucinda, that's not moving.
Item four B?
Okay.
Gotcha.
Agenda item details, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, reorganization agenda items five through nine be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? I'm sorry, I'm not used to this.
The reorganization is different.
Okay.
This would be where you'd need to do the district clerk then.
Okay. So.
Let's do that first.
Okay. But they want five.
Yeah, there's backup.
Okay.
So Barbara, we need to do you before she does five through nine.
Okay, so I'm not approving consensus items, so I'm removing that.
Yep.
Okay.
You don't actually have to, do you?
Yes, you do. We need to read it.
Okay.
Outlaw.
Make her stand up.
Okay, with your hand up. Okay, so. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of district clerk.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of district clerk.
Thank you. Yay.
Yay.
So now we are on item four B, approval of consensus items five through nine of the reorganization agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried. Moving on. Items five through nine be approved.
Five through nine, that's a lot.
That's nice. So.
Okay. Right here, number 10?
Yeah.
Okay. Item 10A, this is the opportunity for the Board of Education to remove, add, or modify items from the agenda with the exception of the consent agenda. Anyone? Okay. No presentations. So now we're into the consent agenda. Nobody wants anything moved, so I'm making a motion to approve the consent agenda then?
Correct. No, you have to make a.
Okay. I just said it's.
No, well, you said the one with the exception of consent.
Okay, does, okay, so now we're on 12A, sorry. Does anyone wish to remove any items from the consent agenda? Okay. So then, item B, we are saying that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, consensus items A through B be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried. Item 13A, this is the time for public comment. This is the time that the Board is designated to receive statements from individuals and groups. The Board will review all statements and respond appropriately at a future meeting. All persons in attendance are required to sign the attendance sheet and designate their representation status, parent, teacher, bus driver, chamber of commerce, et cetera. There is a two-minute time limit.
Anyway.
Don't all jump up at once. Okay. Okay, moving on. To new business, there are no resignations. Item 15A, this is the time for appointments. And the guidelines for appointments are up there, I don't need to read through all those, correct? Okay. Item 15B, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Catherine Musso, who is professionally certified in childhood education grades one through six and students with disabilities grades B through two and one through six, is hereby appointed to a probationary position in the elementary tenure area for probationary period commencing on September 1, 2019 and ending on August 31, 2022 unless extended in accordance with the law. This expiration date is tentative and conditional only except to the extent required by the applicable provisions of section 312 of education law. In order to be granted tenure, the teacher must receive composite or overall annual professional performance review ratings pursuant to section 312D of the education law of either effective or highly effective in at least two of the three preceding years, and if the teacher receives an ineffective composite or overall rating in the final year of the probationary period, the teacher shall not be eligible for tenure at that time. So salary is based upon ETA contract master step 10.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
Sean, Catherine's not here tonight, right?
No.
Okay. Before I move on to item C, this is a good question from Michael Looby. Do I have to read all of that?
Every time.
I feel like I should have it memorized by now, but I don't.
You really should.
I should? Okay.
Basically, particularly because you're dealing with appointments and so forth.
Okay. Not that I want to, you know.
You really hoped you had a different answer, I know.
That's okay.
We enjoy your reading. You're doing a good job.
I'll try to do it fast. All right. Item 15C, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Alicia Brown, who is professionally certified in childhood education grades one through six and student with disabilities grades one through six, is hereby appointed to a probationary position in the special education tenure area for a probationary period commencing on September 1, 2019 and ending on August 31, 2023 unless extended in accordance with the law. This expiration date is tentative and conditional only except to the extent required by the applicable provisions of section 312 of education law. In order to be granted tenure, the teacher must receive composite or overall annual professional performance review ratings pursuant to section 312D of the education law of either effective or highly effective in at least three of the four preceding years, and if the teacher receives an ineffective composite or overall rating in the final year of the probationary period, the teacher shall not be eligible for tenure at that time. Excuse me, salary is based upon ETA contracts master step one.
Second.
Any discussion?
Need some water?
Yes, please. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
Jen, I really should modify that. The reason you have some things in the agenda so that the public hears what the qualifications people are appointing, so I think if you're fine, instead of all of the routine.
Okay.
Business about the salary and the conditions, if you get through what it is and how they're qualified for the job, and then you could just say subject to the conditions listed on the resolution.
Okay.
So, just to clarify, if you look up there, how far down would you be?
If you were looking at this example, for example, and you'd go through Abigail Cosino, who is initially certified, but a B.
She's here, so don't talk about it.
Unless extended in accordance with the law, the expiration date is tentative and conditional only. That'd be enough. The rest of it is in the resolution as.
So you think stop before the extent. And then the last sentence, Michael? And salary is based upon?
I don't think you really need that.
Okay.
But everyone knows who it is you're appointing, how they're qualified, and what they're there for, and that's really the important part. The rest of it's already on the agenda.
That's lovely.
Perfect.
All right.
Save me a lot of words.
Yes. He felt bad for you.
Okay, so item, be approved, C, I'm sorry. Correct?
If you keep coughing, he'll shorten it the next time.
I know. Okay, all right. Item 15D, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Abigail Cosino, who is initially certified in physical education and is hereby appointed to a probationary position in the physical education tenure area for probationary period commencing on September 1, 2019 and ending on August 31, 2023 unless extended in accordance with the law, this expiration date is tentative and conditional only.
Excellent. That's it?
That's all I have to say?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abby's here.
Abstained?
Yay.
Are you related to the Cosinos in Frontier?
I am, those are my parents.
Oh, world.
Well, and cousins and the whole family.
Very nice. Oh, they're lovely people. All right. Opposed, abstained, okay, motion carried. Perfect, yay, congratulations.
Thank you.
Item E, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Alena Ziegler-Smith, who is initially certified in students with disabilities one through six, is hereby appointed to a probationary position in the special education tenure area for a probationary period commencing on September 1, 2019 and ending on August 31, 2023 unless extended in accordance with the law, this expiration date is tentative and conditional only.
Second.
Mike, you wanted me to say something, though, a vague term to refer to?
Yeah, you don't really have to, but if you wanted, subject to the conditions listed in the resolution.
Okay.
Shouldn't we say what salary they're coming in at, though?
What step?
Well, but all it's saying is the step, so unless somebody has.
No, no, but I mean, at least identifying the step in.
You could.
I have no objection to that. I don't think you really need to, because it doesn't really tell anybody a number.
No, I know it doesn't, but at least tells them what stuff they're coming in at.
That makes sense.
So it's clarified.
That makes sense.
So read the last one, Mr..
Okay.
Don keeps making it longer.
Salary is based upon ETA contract master step one.
Second.
Any discussion?
Alana is here.
Oh, congratulations.
Not yet. We didn't vote yet.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
Thank you, Sean and Marissa, for coming. I appreciate that a lot. And you guys do not have to stay for the whole.
Especially her.
Yeah.
She made it today, 2020. She called me today.
Was it, were you in doubt?
I was, yeah. I'm still in doubt at this moment.
Go, go now. Go now.
Hey, I was just somebody on Friday, they had a false alarm, so.
Really?
Stick around.
Oh, yeah.
I'm okay with it, yes.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Item 15F, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing her probationary period, Caitlin Bucci. Be permanently appointed as a senior clerk typist effective July 13, 2019.
Second.
Any discussion?
Caitlin is a secretary at the high school.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried. Item G, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing her probationary period, Amy Blake be permanently appointed as a bus driver effective July 16, 2019.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried. Item H, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing her probationary period, Michelle Kozlak be permanently appointed as a teacher aide effective July 1, 2019.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried. Item I, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following part-time personnel be reappointed for the 2019-20 school year, Jeffrey Pierzanti, Rachel Braun, Sandra Plots, Denise Omen, Lori Cole.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried. Item J, summer appointments, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following appointed, the following be appointed to summer positions, Danielle Smolinski, Heidi Mahoney, Emily Townsend, and Lori Mohan.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried. Item K, board committees. We have some question marks in here, so do we need to be filling in these blanks?
Yeah, we should go for each one.
Okay, so, before we approve these, so we have the collective bargaining unit, which is just Mr. Sutcliffe?
So, the only one that is due to come up in the next year would be the administrative contract. Also, the question is, is he still okay with that?
Are you still okay with Diana? Okay. And that just needs one person?
You can have up to three.
Okay.
So you could ask.
Well, anyone could join at any time, right? Without necessarily being appointed?
Or he could pick an alternate.
Oh, do you want an alternate, or do you want to just?
It doesn't meet that often.
Okay. Perfect. All right. District shared decision-making team, so we have question mark, high school, yeah.
Well, I did it for one meeting last year.
For district? Yeah, would you like to come back?
Again.
That'd be nice. Ellen will do district.
I could do one more meeting.
So Ellen will do the district, oh, I see how it's going, so then Marlene's doing the high school.
Is she?
Are you?
Sure.
Cheryl's on for middle school, yes, no?
Yeah, I didn't do anything this year. Where was I? Like, how do I get notified that I'm supposed to?
We'll make sure that happens for you.
Oh, thank you.
About the meeting.
So, no, I don't want Marlene doing two.
What time does the elementary school shared decision?
3:30.
See, this is always a problem.
3:30.
Because I can't get here until East 4.
Maybe they'll change the time. It's just because it's right after school for them.
Right, so that means then people are going to have to stay longer, they're not going to like me because of that.
And you may decide that you don't need to attend, that you just want to, you know, contribute to things that have to do with that level, it's totally up to you.
Okay, well, why don't you put my name down and take Marlene's off?
For which one?
For the elementary school, because I still have a child in elementary level.
All right, and then we have the Erie County Association of School Boards.
I'm on it. Who is delegating?
Yeah, we weren't, we weren't real present at a lot this past year. None of us were, not Paul, not me, not you.
I think I went to three.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, but anybody can go.
Yes. So Erie County Association of School Boards, they have something every month, legislative, policy dinners, there's a president tonight, there might be a welcome in September for you as president as well.
So do we really have to say, I mean, because we can always go if we hear that evening free.
The legislative one asks for somebody, but Jen, if you can't go, could always send somebody else. That's one where they're really helping to advocate with the, and you've done a couple of those.
Is this the one I went to?
So.
I went to one meeting with you.
Probably. And then they have, like, the meetings, like, they had one at Frontier where all the different representatives came and talked about.
That's one of the legislative ones, yeah.
Yeah, so they like to hear our issues and what our concerns are. I mean, I have no problem going, I'll be quite honest, and they're very informative, but it's a lot of the same talk.
It's a lot.
Over and over and over again. So I feel like.
The one that we went to that Ellen may have gone to would have been like the dessert forum, where they have a topic?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that was it.
That's a nice one, too.
Our snacks.
Yeah, that's my one.
So I have no problem doing it again, and I hate to sound, it's not that it's not worthwhile, but I feel like sometimes when you go to one, the next one is pretty much the same exact set of information. I think they do kind of repeat it because people don't always attend consistently.
You don't have to have a delegate to the Erie County Association of School Boards where those question marks are either.
Okay.
So you don't have to. I can let you know when they're coming up. You do, should, you should get emails, though.
Yeah.
You're just on, Jen, for all of them.
Yeah, I can.
I think the vice president should attend, like, every month.
All of them.
I don't make concessions, stay all the time.
I mean, we could just move on, and, you know, I mean, we all get the emails and the meetings and the email. We should probably just communicate better about who's going and.
And I kick you over reminders sometimes.
Yeah, so maybe if we make a better effort of even, because it is interesting to hear a bit.
At least maybe one of us go.
Yeah. All right, advocacy, I mean, I definitely want to stay on there, although I think.
Do you want to talk about a little bit what it is?
So advocacy, well, if you rewind to 2008, when it was the GEA and the foundation aid was the big push, foundation aid still is a push, the GEA obviously has been abolished, but we're still facing financial issues. I think advocacy points have kind of fallen a little flat because no one really knows how to attack it anymore.
There's no common.
Right, we don't have any common ground anymore, we're all facing different financial issues for different reasons, so it makes joint advocacy with the school districts, with the county, a struggle. And I think most of the powers that be recognize that, when you talk to Galavan or Di Pietro, they seem to understand it, even people, Chris Jacobs, he's not a representative for Eden, but he seemed aware of the struggles that everyone's facing and that there needs to be some equity in how funds are administered, but nobody can seem to find common ground on how that's supposed to be. So it'll be interesting to see this next year and how it all plays out. You know, our governor's still the same, so there's, I don't know if there's going to be a lot of movement.
Right. Not an election year.
But, right, it's not an election year, but there does seem to be some nationwide movement. So, and that's where you really, when you go to those Erie County Association of School Boards, like, there are people who advocate at a national level, who do come to those meetings, so they're interesting to talk to as well. So there's not a lot to update, because there's really not a lot happening right now, everybody's kind of trying to feel the waters and just see.
And yet the time for it is the fall.
It is, but.
And we miss it.
We kind of don't understand what's going on with the funding until the new year, when, like.
It's too late.
Tricklings start to come out from the state, and then we're all scrambling. So, you know, when we hear anything, we will let people know, but it's just not, it's kind of stagnating right now.
So do Ellen and Marlene still want to be on that one, or is somebody new? So do I want to Marlene's to win, be on that one, or does somebody do?
I personally haven't done much. I don't know about you, Marlene.
No, not last year, so...
I mean, there's not really a lot happening.
Yeah, okay, then keep us on.
Yeah.
It's a good one. Um, curriculum technology and personalized learning.
And I'm still interested in...
I am, too.
Yeah, I am.
I think this would be a really good one this year. I mean, we were all certainly very, very proud of our, uh, scores that came out for Business First. When they don't come out good, I don't talk about them, but they came out really good this year, so I'm talking about them, right? Uh, Kelly will come forward and do a presentation for you in September of, of where these scores came from. Um, they do not include the eighteen, nineteen school year. So they were listed as junior, senior high school, not middle school and high school separated out. So that's going to be an interesting one to watch. But we were certainly really, really proud of our science department, the math department. Um, the district also whole coming in, um, with honors, uh, top twenty. And so I think it's going to be really interesting to see what happens this coming year. But we've gone from twenty-six to twenty to eighteen, so I'm hoping, yeah. Yeah, and again, if it, if it's not good next year, I won't talk about it. Because the reason is, is because Business First, we can't ever figure it out. They don't, they don't share the formulas. They change their formulas. And so you're kind of at the mercy as to what it is that they decided they want to report.
I do want to backtrack just for one second, back to the advocacy point. One thing that did come up as kind of common ground amongst all the districts, even the districts who are financially holding their own or doing really well, is the two percent tax cap or the illusion of the two percent tax cap. And everybody is pretty consistent on, or can agree that it should either be flat or the formula should be a little more transparent to the public so they understand exactly what they're getting into. Because people, you know, ours wasn't two percent this year, it was...
Well, it shouldn't be called a two percent tax formula. It should be called the tax formula.
Right, period. Yeah, I mean, it could just be a meaning of the, you know, semantic.
There was a bill on the table from Senator Galavan a year before last about using last year's tax rate for this coming year's school budget, which would be amazing because then people would be able to, to understand what their numbers should look like. It may be something to bring forward to Erie County Association of School Boards. Because again, we're waiting till August to tell anybody.
All right, moving on to facilities and capital project. It's Mr. Carterhee, question mark, and Mr. Sefan.
So this one will be important because this is the year that we will try to narrow down, um, what our December of 2020 referendum will look like. Our hope is that it's a ten million dollar, um, zero tax impact capital project. We know that we need to work on the windows in this building, which means that we need to address the, the masonry outside it, possibly parking lots, but there may be some other things that can get into that ten million. Uh, so it will be important for whoever gets on that to recognize that it is an active committee in the coming year.
How often do they meet?
I don't know yet. Depends if we get to ten million.
A lot of work was done back when they did the last capital project, um, identifying what needed to be done, so it's...
It is the year for the five-year building condition survey, so that will come up as well. The people in the blue shirts, if you remember them.
How do you put me in for the question mark?
Okay, Cheryl's filling the question mark.
Yeah, all right.
And then we're moving on to number five, which is policy. Are we talking? Oh, did, oh, I'm sorry, finance and audit. I skipped that, sorry. There's another question mark. Oh, because it's the same last name. Alan, are any of these jumping out at you?
Lay low for a while.
This one might be fun for you.
I should, I'd be glad to do it. I just want to wait till after my surgery that I'm back on my...
I think this one will wait that long.
Oh, well, then sure, I would do it.
It'll be a December thing.
Oh, then that's fine.
Yeah, I think you'll be good.
Sure.
Give me one just enough.
Might give you a week or two, yeah.
Okay, sure.
All right, so then we have Alan down for number four. Now, number five is policy.
This one will get more active this year. This one wasn't that active last year. That was me just really not being up to par on policies. So you're going to start to see some recommendations coming forward for updates and changes in policy. Certainly, one of them is new immunization policy. Uh, the last time that we did that one, I think, was 2006. And now the law has changed, so we need to update it. So there'll be a couple.
I would be interested in participating in that one.
So Jen would like to get on that one, Barb?
You're not, you're done?
Oh, you don't want me on that. Too many words.
Too many words, yeah.
Oh, he did tell you that one, didn't he?
That's right. Uh, the SRO committee.
Uh, this one is basically just getting together with, um, Missy and, um, the others on the committee to make sure that our SROs are, um, functioning that we had intended them to. Of course, the change from the original is that it was grant funded. Now it's district funded uh, because Senator Galavan lost his bullet aid. Uh, so it would just be coming back, um, meeting with them again, making sure that we find the contract, that we can afford to keep them, and making sure that, that they're doing what we want them to.
Yeah, and I'm fine.
And then the PTA.
PTA, we don't need, doesn't committee. People are welcome. They'll all come anytime.
Okay, you want to take seven off?
You can. Anyone's welcome.
We didn't rotate that much. I came once.
I felt like there was fewer meetings this year, too.
We try and only do five a year now.
Oh, then that wasn't...
I came twenty percent. Yeah, they'll be on the calendar.
All right, is that it? So I don't have to read all through that again, right?
No.
Have you got them all, Barb? You're okay? All right. Okay, that's fine.
We still have to approve it, all right?
Right, any discussions? Wait, did we make a motion? Did anybody second it first? I don't remember.
Seconded, yeah.
Okay, so any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Motion carried. All right, item L of the Erie County Association of, Association of School Board Committees.
Yeah, so this is the one. You do, you do get number four for NISBA. So whoever's planning to go could be a good delegate for a voting delegate for that one. Ellen, you went to it last year, didn't you? The, um, the NISBA conference? Maybe it was in...
Oh, I went my first, my first year, two years ago.
So if anybody's planning to go to the NISBA conference in October this year, you may be the perfect delegate to vote because that's where the vote occurs and you have to be there. Um, you don't have to have a voting delegate for NISBA. But you can't be a delegate and not go.
I'm not telling that, that week.
It's swimming easy.
Is that during the week?
Oh, it's a weekend.
Do we even know where it is?
Uh, Rochester.
Oh, Rochester.
That's easier.
It's like that weekend.
We can always come back to this one, too, if you want, in August.
Yeah, it's hard for me to think that far out.
Let's...
Why don't we, why don't we do that?
Okay. All right, so we're, we're removing the voting delegate.
So this would be helpful, Michael.
It'd be a motion to table.
Okay, so we're tabling the whole thing.
The whole thing.
So we're tabling L.
And it's a table because you're moving it into a different meeting.
Okay. So we're making a motion to table L.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Motion carried. Item sixteen, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following PMOs be declared accessed and disposed of as the district deems appropriate. One, items one, two, and three.
Second.
They have zero value.
Any discussion?
We got their life out of them, I want you to know.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Motion carried. Item seventeen A is the superintendent's report.
Just want to welcome Michael Ruby Beck. Thank you. This is a good meeting for you to actually come to. Uh, the reorg is always a little bit of a challenge for us, isn't it? So it's nice to clarify some of that. Um, Michael did spend some time, um, orienting Ellen Silver, our new board member today. That was very nice. So I appreciate that. A great deal. And welcome, Ellen.
Oh, thank you.
Um, Ellen will spend his summer meeting with us. So he'll spend time meeting with each of the administrators, learning what they do, getting a tour of the district on the four-by-four, maybe on a bus at some point during the ride. Um, and other than that, it was a, it was a really great ending to the school year. I appreciate everything the teachers did. I know that it was a really complex year because of the snow days and that our elementary teachers and GLP had students half-days until the very, very last day of school. And, um, I think, I think, I hope all the students helped them back up at least. So I appreciate everything that you guys did at the end of the school year. Um, other than that, I hope everybody has a great summer and we'll welcome them back in just a couple of weeks because there are less than forty-four summer days.
Oh, don't say that.
It's true. If you don't count the weekend, I'm excited. I'm excited to start it already, so...
Sixty-four days until school starts. Three hundred and sixty-eight days until graduation. Since I have one graduate.
Oh, good for you.
You have a calendar on your phone that tells you that?
I have a countdown. Senior day is three hundred and forty-eight days away.
I didn't know you could do that.
It's just an app called Countdown, so...
That's funny.
Wow. And, um, so this is the first time that we're meeting in this room. Um, Lucinda, thank you. We, we kind of jumped all over it this morning when we looked at the weather. Barb and I were arguing about whether it was going to rain or not. Uh, but when you look at the concert series on Tuesday, it probably didn't rain, I know, but I just, my heart couldn't do that all day long. And so, uh, this was a fast and furious attempt to come in here, but I think it's going to help during the elementary musicals. So when we have our weekly meetings, we can stay out of their way some. If we know it's going to be a smaller crowd, this might be easier for us to do. We'll see. Uh, Lucinda might decide she doesn't have any voice on the video. I don't know. Uh, but I wanted to thank you for, for taking time out today to get it set up, so...
So I have...
Okay, there's no Student Council Representative Report or Director of Finance Business Report, so item D, the Board Report and Roundtable. Does anyone have anything?
Um, I went to graduation and it was very nice. Even though, like, I've been to a few, three of my, my two nieces and nephew graduated, but when you're there on behalf of somebody, you're usually focused on just that person. And so to listen to the speeches more in detail and, uh, the impact of the awards that were given out this year, especially with Amy Banks' family being there and Jen Carrio did a great job getting through that. Um, so I thought it was a very nice ceremony.
I'll just reiterate what, what Cheryl said. It was, it was a great, uh, great ceremony. Hats off to Lucinda and the, the technology held up strong.
Yeah, they had the pictures in the beginning.
The whole, the whole, uh, ceremony. And it was nice to have air conditioning in there, so it was, it was rather comfortable, rather nice.
And the lights didn't flicker.
It was, it was spot on. Good job.
Couple babies crying, but that wasn't...
I know. We continue to struggle at graduation as to the, the dipl, handing out the diplomas. Um, I'd really like the kids to be looking out toward the audience so their parents can see them, but then there's the concern from the audience that maybe we're blocking them by standing in front of them. If they're not facing the audience and we are, then, um, you can't see their face. So we're just going to still try to figure that out, but, um, I don't know that we have the right answer. I feel like you're just shaking a lot of sweaty hands and nobody sees anybody. Yeah, I would like the board to have some conversation, though. Colleen Gableon came to the last board meeting just to express the amount of work that Reader's Respond Day, um, was. And Marlene is here, so she could certainly jump in on it. If you have any ideas of what you'd like to see happen for next year. It was a full K-12 push. I know that Marlene and Colleen did an awful lot of organization. Um, I'd certainly take any ideas from you.
Wasn't it suggested about a committee to do it versus...
We could find a committee of, of, I mean, staff members and a couple of parents, too.
No, we used to have...
Like, starting in September.
We, we used to have, was it an intern or an ad, an intern do it?
Yeah, that was a great thing to go.
And so what's, if we can, there...
You want to find an intern?
Just grab one off the street. And if, and if that's not possible, perhaps we should consider some kind of a stipend position. Um, if a person is passionate about doing it, perhaps we should consider that. Because as Marlene pointed out, I mean, it's, it's, it's a tremendous amount of work and, you know, volunteer, all volunteers are pulled in nineteen different directions and it's the same people volunteering for the same things, and so perhaps we should consider...
So perhaps a committee to talk about that. Because what, what will come up is, is that you consistently have elementary and GLP, um, teachers doing it on their own time. And so to offer a stipend for part of the district but not all of it may not necessarily feel fair. But we could certainly bring a committee together to talk about Reader's Respond Day.
I think it's a fair conversation. It, it's been important to the board. And I, I think it, it sets Eaton apart from other districts who don't do something like that.
It went well this year, too.
We did, it, the sun actually was shining, and so that was kind of a nice...
That was because of Marlene. She pushed it to the end of May.
And so ju, just like, just like a, a school play or, or other events where we have stipend positions, perhaps we should consider, because it is important to us, it's part of our identity, to consider a stipend. Because it's a, a one-day event, you know, maybe that stipend is not huge compared to, say, a, a entire sports season or something like that, but, but fair is fair. Maybe we have, you know, we have three buildings, maybe there's a person from each building who's a coordinator.
Yeah, we can talk about it.
So possibly, you know, even putting us back more on, on the student body and having them part of the committee and, and determination there. I mean, some things that I've been thinking about is just, you know, community service hours that we have in, in our policy. How, you know, twenty hours over a four-year...
That's not a lot.
No, it's not. Um, so I, I mean, that was just something I was going to bring up in, you know, as we, as we start moving through the year in regards to our rigor. I just think that's, it's pretty weak. Um, and how many people actually record the community service hours? Where's it actually recorded?
So I can tell you that that happens through government classes seniors. Prior to that, it would be through Reader's Respond. Um, certainly at GLP and elementary, that we know what they do, but to have a portfolio of it, no, we don't.
Yeah, and, and honestly, twenty hours over that timeframe is, is ridiculous. It, it's something that one, one of the pieces of it, i- in addition to having, for example, stipend position from the buildings, would be to have student government involved and, and to not throw it necessarily on the president or vice president of the student council, but to, to have them bring some of, you know, their, their peers in, in another leadership role that isn't necessarily an elected position. And, you know, there's, there's more than le, more leaders than just the four kids who are elected. And so it, that might be the right fit for a, a, a group of three or four kids who could be building level coordinators. And how cool would it be to have a sixth grader who, or a fifth grader who's a building coordinator? You know, that might be very, I'm not certain that a second grader building coordinator would be a great fit. It'd be fun.
We have ideas.
But, but, um...
It's a great idea.
But, but it's a leadership role. It's, it's a resume builder for college. I mean, it's, it's all those kinds of things, and so... But, but I would not be against paying someone to, to, to do it from the standpoint that it is something that's pretty important to us, and it, it was missed when we didn't do it.
It's a nice day, it's a fun day.
Do you know ahead of time, like, how far or when? Do you traditionally get student teachers in this district, or is it hit notice?
We do, but student teachers are different than interns. An intern is a current teacher going after their administrative. And because we have to evaluate them and kind of hold them to certain...
Gotcha.
And right now, I don't have any of those.
Well, I just, I was thinking, like, my niece is student teaching, but only the first six weeks.
And that's the problem. You really can't met the right times. And by, by the end of May, you wouldn't have anybody.
But I'm thinking if you want to get the ball rolling...
I can reach out, I can reach out to these. These are some good ideas, thank you.
Don't tell her I said that, please.
Don't tell her. It's going to be...
She's in Florida vacationing. I'm going to Val and tell her if she's going to do it.
Cheryl volunteered here.
Val told her. So the board, the retreat.
Oh. Oh, yeah, we don't have a date scheduled, do we, for board retreat?
So generally, generally in the summer, the board will try to get together on one day for a retreat or a meeting for a couple hours?
There should be another named board.
A retreat, sorry. I'll bring food, I promise. Is, uh, that's when you take a look at the proposed district goals. We'll talk about them. So, oh, and Cheryl's offered her house two years in a row and we didn't get her up on that one. That would be a retreat.
It would be a retreat to my house.
I like that idea.
So how about if I send something out with some dates and you guys could take a look at what works? I'll start with Cheryl. I appreciate that.
Anybody else have anything? Okay, moving on to future dates. The next regular Board of Education meeting is August twenty-first, 2019 at 7:00 PM in the Eaton Elementary School Auditorium.
So I'd like to make a motion that I can't make that we do it in here.
Okay, so we will make a motion to amend the location to the district offices.
District Office Conference Room.
District Office Conference Room.
Second, then.
Any discussion?
So are we, so in the past, August has been kind of crazy. We've been able to eliminate all those pop-up meetings with what we've been doing to basically just have it...
So Michael has helped us write resolutions for me to preliminarily appoint and accept resignations for new staff. Uh, you might want to talk about that for a second, but you, you've definitely helped us create that opportunity for me to, to do that upfront.
Not a whole lot to, um, really explain, but the, the idea was to give some flexibility so...
Don't have to meet every week.
Don't have to meet every week.
Yeah, it's crazy.
Just a few years back, it was, I think, one, one August, it was probably five or six of them.
Really?
Seven fifteen in the morning.
I do know, Michael, that, that Barb went to a NISBA training and that the attorneys at NISBA don't like that. You like it. That's all that matters to me, so...
It's, yeah, it, how much flexibility you have, um, you're going to have some lawyers who are going to say, I don't know, we've got to, we've got to be very, very, very conservative about those things. And others who are going, are going to say, look, let's be practical. You've got people meeting once a month. You've got a few things that are going to happen in the interim. You can move forward. Everything can be ratified within a couple of weeks.
And I think for me, the opportunity for us to do this allows people that are coming in for an appointment to resign from their other position.
It keeps the process moving versus solid until the twenty-first.
Yeah, it's hard for them. They have to, they don't want to give up a job till they have a job.
Exactly. So I appreciate that help from Michael. Did the answer question done?
Yes.
All right, uh, so all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Motion carried. Item nineteen A. Oh, wow, that's a lot of work. You don't have to read it. Uh, read B, read B. There's the executive session guidelines. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent at 7:49 PM, the Board of Education enter executive session to discuss the history of a particular person.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed, abstained? Has anybody ever opposed? Motion carried. What's the blue moon?
Yeah, no food. I know.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.